The pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting complies with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting has been published on the municipal board, Milton Board, and the appropriate newspapers.
Mr. Martins?
Present.
Mr. Hyman?
Here.
Dr. Hoffstein?
Here.
Ms. Rosal?
Here.
Ms. Bradley?
Here. Do we have any resolutions this evening, Ms. Cipriani?
We do not.
Okay, and we have three sets of minutes, so just bear with me because there are a variety of dates and we're going to have to identify who is eligible to vote. So the first date is February 7th of 2024. So I think it's just Dr. Hoffstein, Mr. Hyman, and myself.
All right, well, that is the majority of those present. Mr. Hy-
I'm sorry, we need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoffstein?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes. Our second set of minutes is from October-
I'm sorry, but it would be appropriate to call the other two and have them abstain. Okay. Mr. Martins?
I abstain.
Ms. Rosal?
Abstain.
Our second set of minutes are from October 16th of 2024. Mr. Martins, myself, Mr. Hyman was not here.
Correct.
Dr. Hoffstein was here, Christabel? No, right, okay.
May I ask you this question, if anyone? Is there anyone who is not present tonight who was on the board at that time?
Sheera. Sheera.
Okay, all right, so then let's not vote on those tonight because- So, and if there's an opportunity, if not, we will invoke the rule of necessity. And in case that needs to happen, I would ask those who are not, were not on the board at that time, to review those minutes.
I've reviewed it. I actually watched the meeting as well.
You did watch the meeting as well? All right, well, let's see if Ms. Bernaz is, Mrs. Bernaz is available next meeting. If not, we may call upon that. Thank you for those efforts.
All right, and last but not least, June 18th of this year, I do believe we are all eligible. I need a motion in a second, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoffstein?
Yes.
Ms. Rosal?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes. I do have vouchers this evening.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
I'm sorry.
My apologies for interrupting. I didn't want to interrupt the voting, but we do have a resolution that does need to be voted on? May I approach?
I think it's grand harmony.
Sure.
And also, I do have a question. Ms. Hortons?
Yes.
My understanding is that you have been, your seat has been changed, is that correct?
Yeah, I think I'm permanent now.
Okay, and were you sworn in in that new position?
No.
Okay, let's, let's-
I thought the reorg was going to be part of that.
And we can do that.
Okay.
So let's take a moment before maybe you could have this discussion.
Is there a Bible?
I'm sorry, what was he saying?
No, I just wanted to run that. Oh, yeah, no, we're going to proceed. As I said, it's traditional, it's not- I'm sorry, I just had to receive a note. Are you sure there's no Bible over there?
No.
Okay, all right, then we'll proceed. Please raise your right hand. I, please take your name.
I, Carlos Martin.
Usam is fair or a crime. That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of zoning board member. That's my bill. And I also support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the government's establishment in the United States. In the last state, I didn't want to stay under the authority. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yeah. No, we can do the resolution because you have all of the members, the assignment of the different things. All right, so this is a resolution, the zoning board of the township of Jackson County of Ocean State of New Jersey, granting approval for a technical subdivision and approval amendment for property located at Harmony Road, block 4801, lot 5.01.
I need a motion in a second, please, to approve the resolution.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoffstein?
Yes.
Ms. Rosal?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, I'll return these papers to you.
Absolutely, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Resolution number 2025-18. Okay, I also have three vouchers in front of me, but we're only going to approve one for this evening because we didn't approve the minutes, correct? For that one meeting, we're going to hold off on the voucher?
No, the voucher could still be signed. The minutes were prepared and it's appropriate to pay for that.
All right, so we have three vouchers. October 16th of 2024, February 7th of 2024, those are both in the amount of $100. And then for this evening, 71625 in the amount of $175. I need a motion in a second to pay the vouchers, please.
Motion.
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoffstein?
Yes.
Ms. Rosal?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
All right, let's go ahead and do the reorganization. And then we'll move on to the announcements.
I would like to nominate Lynn Bradley to continuous chairwoman of the zoning board.
A second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, roll call. Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoffstein?
Yes.
Ms. Rosal?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Are there any nominations for?
Thank you. Nominations for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Hoffstein for vice chair.
Are there any other nominations?
Or a second?
Or a second, I'm sorry. I'll second that.
All right, are there any, yeah, are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Motion, Hyman.
Is there a second?
Can't second me on motion.
Well, actually, you can. I know it's a tremendous honor, but does not carry any monetary reward.
I'd be happy to serve, you know, but-
Is that a second?
I will.
Sure.
Okay, so then there are two nominations. Are there any other nominations that are somewhat depleting board? So what would be appropriate is we'll have the vote regarding Dr. Hoffstein first, and if that does not succeed, then there'll be a vote for Mr. Hyman. Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
No.
Dr. Hoffstein?
Yes.
Ms. Rosal?
No.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes. It's kind of awkward, right?
Congratulations.
Who wouldn't want that extraordinary position? Congratulations, Dr. Hoffstein.
That high-paying job. Excuse me, sorry, yes. We also need to appoint a recording secretary, right? A recording secretary, yes. And I think it's appropriate, I can, I would like to nominate Motion, Hyman.
A second?
I think I can nominate, right?
Yes, you're still a member of the board. You can nominate people. Are there any other nominations?
Did, Christabel, did you second that?
Yes.
Oh, I thought I heard her.
Yes. I knew there was a second, I just wasn't sure if there are any other nominations. If not, when the chairwoman's able.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoffstein?
Yes.
Ms. Rosal?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes. And I believe we need an acting secretary as well.
Okay.
Actually, for the record, let me correct what I said. I said, recording secretary to secretary. It's actually-
That's actually acting secretary. I think it's the reporting secretary.
Excuse me. So we also need a nomination for the acting secretary.
No, that was-
No, that was the secretary to replace Sheera. So that's motion.
Okay, all right, all right, okay. The acting secretary will be fully covered here.
Yes, so we need nominations for the acting secretary, and I would like to nominate Christabel.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoffstein?
Yes.
Ms. Rosal?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes. And now we are going to swear in our professionals.
I just, I do want to say that here, we need to adopt dates. The official newspaper, the official newspapers remain unchanged. We can do that by one motion, and the meeting dates are as listed in the memorandum, originally dated 6/5/25, updated 6/13/25. Does everyone have those dates?
So I do. I will not be able to attend the April 1st meeting as I have a holiday. It's Passover, so I'm just, you know, for the record-
April 1st is Passover?
The first day. So I'll be unable to.
Which one are we talking about, the October 1st or to get?
April 1st.
I also will not be able to attend that meeting.
And forgive my ignorance, gentlemen.
It's a religious holiday.
Right, no, no, I understand April, October. It says October 1st and 15th. The 15th is pending cancellation, replaced with October 29th.
Correct, that's because of the holidays in that month.
Holiday, right, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's why they wanted to replace it, just with one meeting in that month for the 29th.
All right.
Assuming you're not going to cancel the April 1st, you just have to make sure that we have the meetings that don't need a full board.
Right, or if potentially we may have to discuss, depending on our application load at that point, we may have to discuss having an additional date, like they're talking about in October. So that's why I wanted to bring up October to make sure, you know, if we need be in April, we may have to choose another date, depending on our load.
Well, April will have three Wednesdays, so it's an alternate if you need it.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, did we, can I get some clarification on the October dates? We're going to do the 1st and the 29th?
No, just the 29th.
So the 1st and the 15th are both pending cancellation or just the 15th? It's both of them?
Definitely the 1st.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Definitely the October 1st.
Okay.
So that's going to leave us with the 15th and the 29th of October for meeting dates?
I'm sorry, forgive me, Gina. Mr. Hyman, what's going, I'm sorry, what's the 15th?
The 15th is the end of the holiday of Sukkot, so it's still holiday until nightfall.
So-
So I'm unable to attend that meeting.
All right.
And what about the 29th, is acceptable?
Correct, yes. That's why we made those changes.
So do we want to just accept now that we're just going to have a meeting on October 29th?
Yes, why don't we do that for October 29th? If the load is such that the board would consider an alternate meeting, then we can take a date closer in time. then we can take a date closer in time.
Okay, and then April will?
Yeah, for April 1st, I think it would be appropriate to leave that on the agenda, but again, we may have to change that.
So we need a motion and a second to accept the counter, correct?
Correct.
All right, so we need a motion and a second to accept the zoning board meeting dates memorandum for 2025, 2026?
Are you including the?
Can you just put on the record what we chose for October, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, say it again.
What we decided for October?
Oh, October 29th.
Just the 29th.
Correct. And as we get closer, should we decide, or it be deemed necessary, then we'll have a discussion about potentially the 22nd, but for now, we'll just leave it as October 29th?
Thank you.
Are we making a separate motion for the newspapers?
I think one motion for the dates and the newspapers is acceptable.
Okay.
So I would make a motion to approve the memorandum, the dates, and the existing newspapers.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Dr. Hofstein?
Yes.
Ms. Rosal?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
And as I think you may be aware, the law regarding publication in newspapers in New Jersey is changing rapidly, but that was still appropriate to do for this year, in this form.
Excuse me. Any other?
No, 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 did we do the announcement?
We did not do the announcement, so I was ready to go to you now.
Okay, so the announcements for this evening are that application number one, Phillips.
Excuse me, could I just interrupt one minute? I didn't realize you were going to the application.
I'm sorry.
I'd just like to take a couple of minutes to thank, on behalf of the board, give a thanks to Bob Houdak, who has served this board and has served on the planning board for many, many years. He was always prepared, he is always knowledgeable, he always gave an equitable decision, and hopefully, a future governing body will ask him to come back and serve again. So thank you to Bob Houdak for his service, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Houdak. Excuse me.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, so the announcements for this evening, number one on the agenda, Douglas Phillips is being carried. The, was a failure of notice, and I'm sorry, do you have the new date? I'm sorry, Gina, do you have the new date? I don't have the agenda with the new date. I think it was, let me see if I can. I don't have anything on mine, my apologies. Gina, I have nothing notated here, but I have a note from Dawn that's, the next available date is September 3rd, or September 17th. I think. But it would have to be number two if they chose, if we chose the 17th. Okay, now, I did see for Dawn, she just said that he is trying to get it on for the September meeting, and that's. So we want to carry it to the 3rd or the 17th, Gina? She just said September, all right, so we don't have the date on that yet, it's for offense, so I think it'll be a question of whether he is able to get the notice in time. Also, application number three, Hughes, is being carried, and notice will be required, and that, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, notice will not be required. Do you, I'm sorry, do you have the date for that one? I don't have the correct date. All right, so that will be on September 17th.
Through the chair, can I question about that application? We've discussed many times in the past about applicants coming on, being scheduled, and then last minute being carried without any kind of, you know, representation. The suggestion in the past was that they be removed from the agenda and not be rescheduled. This was on our last meeting, I believe, and again, it's being carried for the second time.
Yeah, it's been carried a number of times. To that point, what I would like to suggest is, as we had discussed previously, and I had circulated points, received feedback from the board, have prepared ordinances that I would like to send to the governing body, and with the representation there from this board, and a request that would refine those procedures, and also put as a, the procedures regarding carrying of matters, and it would be that you could carry it once, by writing, after that you would have to appear before the board in person to request, and the board would have the ability to do it. So what I'd like to do, if you could, I know this is something we've discussed numerous times, is circulate those ordinances, I wanted to wait until the new board member was available, and ask you for input, and if there's no negative input, then I will forward those to the governing body, and hopefully, they will adopt same.
Thank you.
I will double check and send out an email if I am incorrect, but when I spoke to Dawn, if I'm not mistaken, the attorney had a conflict that had to be in another. They were scheduled on our agenda, then he had an application in another town, and when they rescheduled, they scheduled for tonight. So that was his conflict, is my understanding, but I do agree with you, and I'm in agreement with Gina, I do believe I have responded to your recommendations. I do agree with you that, you know, going forward, we should submit that.
Because we, and as Mr. Hyman said, we've seen this time and time again, where it's not one, or even two, but in, you know, a case like this, this will be now the fifth adjournment. All right, did you want me to go ahead and swear?
Yes, please.
If the professionals could raise your right hand, you swear affirm that the testimony you'll give to this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
I do.
I do.
Please state your name and position for the record.
Mark Romeyer, board engineer.
Gina Zuma Lo, assistant zoning officer.
Drew Pavlik, traffic engineer.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your patience, we're going to move on to applicant number two, Cardinal Ian Jackson Crossing, number two, Adventure Crossing, amended preliminary and final site plan, 776-6, Phase 1-CDENF.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Salvatore Alfieri.
I just have to step out, conflict for this one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Romeyer has to excuse himself.
Good evening again, this matter was on the agenda for a continued public hearing. Question was raised about the permitted residential density and an interpretation of the ordinance for this zone. This accusa project, Adventure Crossing project, has been before this board on many iterations over many, many years. The controlling ordinance, and we didn't bring any witnesses to testify because in light of the written opinion from your attorney, we expect that, we assume the board's going to agree with your attorney, and therefore, we're going to have an issue where we have to renotice if we have to go forward.
Well, that's very nice, Mr. Alfieri, but don't ever underestimate your own eloquence. And just, I want to make sure that I have on the record that you're going to be asking for this to be carried, for this matter, to be carried to a new date, and that you waive any statutory defaults.
Yes, but can we save that to the end, because we need to pick a new date, too?
Yes, I just wanted to get it on the record.
Yeah, that's fine. So, section 244, 57.2, which is the highway commercial mixed-use zone that is in place for this application, was adopted many years ago, and subsequent to the adoption of that ordinance, the council adopted another ordinance, 3324, and in that ordinance, the council attempted to redefine how one calculated the residential density, but it was ruled upon by a prior attorney for this board that this application was protected under the existing ordinance under the time of application rules. So we're living under the existing ordinance. The existing ordinance says that the applicant for this project is entitled to four residential units per acre, and it just, it says the tract is what they refer to as the area, I guess, that would be used for the purpose of calculating. It's our position that all of the prior applications contemplated this project being one unified project. Since the initial approval, there was a warehouse approved and sold, there's commercial properties that are approved and built on the front of the property, recently approved phases three and four for residential development, but it's our position that the entirety of the project is the tract under that ordinance, and therefore, when you take the gross acreage and multiply it, or divide it by four, the residential density is significantly higher than what you would do if you used the calculation where you only used the acreage for each section. We believe that the correct interpretation is the entirety of the project. I submitted a memo which gave our position. A couple of points just in support of our position. One is that there is a section in the ordinance that is called the technical subdivision, and it contemplated that the applicant or the developer of this project could, would potentially sell off portions of the project through a less formal subdivision process, and we've used that in the past. So it was always contemplated that it was possible, either for financing certainly, or certainly for sale, that a technical subdivision would result in new lots and then ultimate sale of a portion of the property. We did receive a general development plan approval at the beginning. We acknowledge that this project now under Phase 1 is different than what the general development plan approval was back many, many years ago, but again, that GDP was a comprehensive review of the entire site, not individual components, but the entire site of what this potentially could be developed as. We think that the interpretation that's being asserted now, contrary to our position, is really an end around getting you to exactly where you would be if you used the new ordinance, which you're not allowed to use. And that would mean you're going to take Phase 1 only, the acreage from Phase 1 only, divide by four, and that's the number of residential units that you would allow. Our plan as proposed exceeds what would be allowed, and that would result in a density variance. We submitted in our memo the reasons why we think this is a comprehensive project that should be considered as one project, one property, as opposed to the multiple sections. The examples we used in our memo, which I'm going to get to in a second, were that there's shared access, all of the components would use the main access points on Route 537. There's an internal private road or spine road that services the entire complex. For example, the warehouse project cannot get to the road, the Route 537, unless it gets onto the spine road and gets on a shared common internal roadway to get to 537. The residential development you just approved last month can use the common driveway as well. All the other components can use that common driveway to get to either eastern or western access points of 537. There's shared signage for the entire site, there's shared utility easements, stormwater management, so the project was developed as a unified project. So our position is, you should use the entire acreage of the complex, and then divide by four to get four units per acre, and that would be the density. And if that were the ruling of this board, then this project can proceed as is without that density variance. There are other variances that we would have to prove during the course of our presentation, but that density variance would not be one of them. So we're going to ask that the board make a decision on that.
Mr. Alfieri, I think you may have misinterpreted my memorandum to some degree. The reference that I had made in the memorandum was to the removal, the portion which I guess was Phase 2 initially, that was removed from the GDP. That is the part that I do not believe should be part of this calculation.
Okay, well, I don't, the problem is, is that if you limit the review to only that point, the GDP has changed substantially.
But that section, it's not just the GDP has changed, I'm sorry to cut you off, but am I based on a factual misunderstanding? My belief is that that section, Phase 2, was affirmatively removed from the GDP and is no longer part of the GDP.
That may or not, may not be true, I don't know how it's relevant to this argument, because again, the applications no longer are protected by that GDP unless they're going to develop exactly what the GDP approved, which is significant.
Because in terms of the identification of the tract, as I understand your argument, if I can try and boil it down, and maybe I'm not understanding it correctly, it's, this came in originally and received approvals as a phased project for all of this land, this tract of land, and that no matter what, is that your position? Then you're always going to have to include all of that land, that what happens in that land, and I'm not talking just about selling off, but that removal from the GDP does not matter, and that no change, that once the original approval was given simultaneously for the entire tract, that the entire tract would always be included, and that the GDP is irrelevant? Is that your position?
Yes, because we're interpreting the ordinance tonight, not the GDP and the subsequent approvals that occur. The ordinance simply says four acres per, four units per acre of the tract, and our position is that tract is the entirety, whether there was GDP that had everything and then subsequently changed, whether we got any approvals that are consistent with the GDP, which many of them are no longer consistent with the original GDP.
So, Mr. Alfieri, your legal position is that if there has been an approval for a complete tract, there are no circumstances in which you would not include the entire tract in your calculations?
For the residential density, correct.
I question, I have a question regarding this. Approximately a month ago, the same applicant was here before this board looking for a minor subdivision for, and this is in phases three and four, and then the position of the applicant was that all that we needed to look at, we being the board, all the board needed to look at was just the land in that application. So do you see nothing contradictory in the position that a month ago, it was appropriate to look at only a closed section of the overall tract, but now you are asking the board to look at the entire tract, including the portion previously removed?
No, because, and we stated it at that meeting, we did that subdivision, it took about five acres off of Phase 1 and attached it to Phase 3 and 4 for the sole purpose of avoiding this argument when it came to 3 and 4. We wanted to get 3 and 4 approved without debating or potentially litigating.
So you wanted to have your cake and eat it, too?
Yeah, exactly, because in your, the way you, and there's nothing wrong with that, but in your, what we felt, especially Mr. Peters raised it in one of his reports, questioning how the density should be calculated, we felt that we could develop Phase 3 and 4 without any question with density, which is our right, and we never, and we made it clear that we were doing that for the sole purpose of getting 3 and 4 approved, and now, and we.
So you would agree that all, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We said we would come back for 1, Phase 1, and we would make the argument to consist with what I just did tonight.
So your position is that the units that were approved for 3 and 4 would come off the number of units available, even under your calculation?
Yes.
Even though that was looked at, at the request of the applicant, as an entirely discreet section?
Yes.
So if the board were to look at only this application and the acreage on this application, they would be acting only consistently with what the applicant had asked them to do in phases 3 and 4?
No, if, what we're asking you to do for this application, Phase 1, is to look at the ordinance the way I just described it, which would be the totality of the acreage, the totality of the permitted units, subtract Phase 3, 4 units, and whatever's left can be built somewhere else on the project, in this case, Phase 1.
Which, and your calculation would also include the removed Phase 2?
No, we think Phase 2 is part of the tract, and therefore, it has to be included.
Right, but I appreciate that that is what you were asking the board to do, but I'm not, what my question was, is if this board were to treat this application, Phase 1, just the way that it treated Phases 3 and 4 at the applicant's request, phase one, just the way that it treated phases, phase three and four at the applicant's request, wouldn't that be a consistent position?
No. No, because, again, we said why we were doing what we were doing, because we knew that this issue was going to be an issue that the board was going to have an issue, a problem with. And we wanted to get a project approved consistent with what we thought was your interpretation of the ordinance. So there's no inconsistency. We just didn't want, we kicked the can down the road, and we're now at the, down the road where we have to deal with the can, so.
So, so the board, as you said, this tract has gone through many iterations. And is also gone through litigation regarding phase, phase two.
Yes.
Yes, right. And so your argument for inclusion of phase two is just that it was part of the original application ten, fifteen years ago, whatever that was. I'm sorry, I don't remember the date of the first application. So it was there then, and there is only access through the remainder of the parcel. So that, those are the bases that you have for including phase two?
Just one of the several that I cited, but yeah, that's one of the reasons. And the litigation you cited was that the neighbors at that time did not want a, like, Topgolf-type facility there. So we had agreed as a settlement to remove that use from the permitted uses that would be under the GDP. That was really the only thing that we, that was the reason for the litigation, the neighbors didn't want that use.
And didn't, did that approval that they didn't want and that you ended up settling on include any access to Anderson Road?
No.
Okay. So it was always contemplated that there would only be access through. So, so that really is, I mean, so you said that those are not the only two bases. One, it was part of the original application, that that parcel is part of the original application, and it has common access. What are, what are the other reasons why phase two should be included?
Shared signage, shared utilities, shared stormwater management.
Right. And that was all part of, of that original application? And so your position is that should be included for those reasons, and that phases three and four should be included, and the board should not treat phase one as it treated three and four for the same reasons?
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Comments, questions, issues, concerns?
I was happy to watch the attorneys debate. From a practical perspective, when the general development plan was approved, there were seventy-odd uses. It was also the ability to construct residential at four units an acre. The interpretation may have been a flaw in writing the ordinance. The only new thought I can offer to the board is, if the applicant developed sites 285 acres, plus or minus, if the applicant developed 280 of it non-residentially, would he be entitled to come back here and say, the last five acres, I can put 1,150 units on? Does 286 times four is 1,150? Or are they entitled to build up to four units an acre if they meet the bulk requirements for the zone? I don't want to get too far down into this. At the end of the day, if you use Mr. Alfieri's argument, they keep selling pieces off as they find users for the property, could they come down, have one acre left, and say, well, we're entitled to build 286 times four units on that one last acre? Or are we entitled to build residential subject to the provisions of the bulk requirements of that zone? Now, I just went far afield of the memo you received from Mr. Alfieri and the memo you received from Ms. Cipriani, because we really didn't have any planning or engineering testimony. We had respectfully two attorneys reading through the land use law and their interpretation of the ordinance. From a practical perspective, is it proper to say to the board, if I'm down to one acre, I can still build 1,150 units?
And I have an answer for that. In the ordinance, section 244, 57.2, item F has the residential development standards, including the lengths of the buildings, the separation of the buildings, et cetera. So to answer your question, on an acre property, you could not meet those standards, but if the property was large enough to meet all of those residential distance standards, then yes, you could develop it on a smaller tract.
I think we need to re-explain. The phase that has the warehouses, and that is owned by another entity who purchased it, where does that come into play with Mr. Alfieri's interpretation?
Well, in Mr. Alfieri's interpretation, to speak for him, though he's right here, it would be included. In Mr. Alfieri's argument, so the, under the ordinance that's at issue now, it's four acres, I'm sorry, four, the density is four per the acreage of the tract. So really, the question is the tract. Under the municipal land use law itself, density is the permitted number of dwelling units per gross acre of land that is the subject of an application for development, including any non-contiguous land, which we don't have here, if authorized by municipal ordinance, which is what we are, do have, or by planned development. So in Mr. Alfieri's view, since, and again, he is right here, so he'll correct me, I'm sure, if I'm misquoting him, the, since there was an original application for Adventure's Crossing as a whole, that had section, phases one, two, three, and four, and I think five of that, all in it, that for now and forever, that is the tract to be used for calculation of the density. That that is the gross acreage of, for every application that needs to be considered for residential development of any portion of this tract. What, the reason I was singling out phase two is that phase two was not only sold off, because there is an argument that, that the selling of different pieces would not change that if you're all, and I have some disagreement with Mr. Alfieri, in the fact that you had, they had a general development plan, they've had different plans for different aspects and different phases. I don't think that it is coherent to consider it all as one parcel when it's been the subject of so many separate applications. But phase two in particular was removed from the general development plan. The reason I had referred to litigation regarding that is following that litigation, it was affirmatively removed from the GDP. So if we were looking at what the tract is, either you look back, in Mr. Alfieri's view, to the original approval, which included all of the acreage, or you could look to the GDP, and phase two has now been removed from the GDP, which is part of my argument. And the other part is, as you recall, since it wasn't that long ago, that when it came to the application for phases three and four, that the applicant asked us to look only at that application for three and four in terms of calculating density. They actually did a minor subdivision from another section and added it on in order to create the density for just phases three and four. So those are the factors that the board needs to consider. That for this parcel under the ordinance that was in effect, this has nothing to do with the new ordinance, we have to interpret the old ordinance. When it comes to calculating the gross acreage for this application for phase one, and the number of residential units that are permissible or there as of right, obviously with variances, other things could be permissible, that are there as of right, is the calculation the entire original application or the original GDP area? Or is that area reduced by the removal of section two? I'm sorry, Mr. Myers, I feel like I always have my back to you. Is it diminished by the removal of phase two from the general development plan? Mr. Alfieri has stated that in his view, and he had cited a case in support of that, that because there's only one access and there are shared utilities, that that would be therefore part, remain part of the overall tract. I will tell you that in my view, those, is somebody ringing?
You hear it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's coming from there.
I do. Sorry for the interruption. On my view, though those factors have weight, they are not dispositive, because there are other kinds of development, and I'm sure some have come before the board, where there is a question of access, they're clearly separate projects, but they have a cross-access, or they have shared utilities, that those factors are indicative of commonality, but they are not dispositive on that issue. So that's really the question before the board, and certainly give Mr. Alfieri, Alfieri a response, an opportunity to respond, but that's, that's what you're being asked. Do you look at, because it was part of the, the original application included all phases of Adventure Crossing, and the GDP originally included all phases, as, so do you, in terms of the gross density calculation, the number of units that will be permissible in phase one, look at and calculate that in light of the entire tract as it was at the time of the original application and the time of the original GDP, which included phase two? Or do you believe that since phase two was removed from the GDP, not just sold, but removed from the GDP, that that portion would not be included? Then, and I'm going to skip for a second, Mr. Peters had also raised an issue on whatever is left, and I think Mr. Alfieri in essence agreed with this, that if the bulk standards are met, the bulk standards are applicable and could reduce the number of permissible units on their own, aside from the density calculation. So you're always having to look at the bulk requirements, no matter what the application is, to see if they're met. But also, the last issue that I had raised was that the applicant had, of its own volition, a month ago, asked the board to look only at sections three and four and calculate the density, residential density for sections three and four that was approved by the board approximately a month ago as a discrete unit. And I suggest that a universe where the applicant gets to make that selection, but the board does not, that that is not necessarily required by the law. So you can either take it as a whole, you can just cut off that section two that has been removed from the GDP, which would reduce the acreage, and I'm not going to do math for you because it's not my strong suit, but there's some number of acreage, amount of acreage, obviously, that was in phase two, that that would then remove, and then the density would be calculated on the remainder of the tract that is still been part, is still part of the GDP, is still part of applications before this board.
In other words, you're taking section two and almost grandfathering it in.
Well, Mr. Alfieri is.
Yeah.
I am not.
It's been grandfathered in as part of the acreage for the whole project.
Yes, because it's the entire tract. But just in response to one point, I believe it might have been you, Mr. Hyman, who asked us at the phase three and four hearing, how are we handling that density question? And my response was, we're doing this minor subdivision to avoid it here, but we're going to deal with it at the next phase one hearing. That was my response, because we did not want to have that battle and have this entire project potentially held up in that, on that issue. So that's why it was.
But my, I'm sorry, my point is, Mr. Alfieri, that you, the board, that the applicant availed itself of that option, but that also indicates that each application can be looked at on its own, each phase.
We don't agree that that's the case, but you could certainly interpret it that way.
So if I could just ask, I'm trying to understand the general purpose of the GDP a little bit better, because according to what Mr. Alfieri is saying is that, like Mr. Hofstein is saying, is that it's technically grandfathered in. What is the purpose of that GDP if things change drastically throughout the plan and things are removed and added? What is the actual purpose of it if not for this?
Well, Mr. Hyman, the, the purpose of the GDP is to avoid, to some extent, it is to provide a comprehensive development plan for a large tract such as this. You wouldn't see a GDP for, you know, a one-acre tract. It's for a large tract that's intended to have multiple uses, and it is to provide a comprehensive and coherent plan for how that large tract will be developed. Certainly, there is a mechanism in law for amendment of the GDP. In this case, and I don't want to put words in Mr. Alfieri's mouth, but it appears that the applications have wandered away from the GDP to a high degree. Mr. Alfieri is suggesting to you that the GDP is therefore, and again, I'm going to put it in a strong way and you can soften that, Mr. Alfieri, is irrelevant, that the GDP, you know, it was, it was intended and it was amended a certain amount of times, and then it was just kind of left by the wayside and gone on to applications, but that it doesn't matter because it's not about the GDP, even though that was the comprehensive plan for this, this entire tract, that it's about the original application that was made prior to the GDP.
Again, so if it requires the GDP and we've deviated from that original plan, like you're saying numerous times, what was the purpose of it?
Can I tell you from the applicant's point of view what the purpose was? So first of all, at the time that the GDP was, now you could, now you could look at it.
I was just waiting for the right moment.
At the time, the G, well, first of all, the reason one does a GDP is on a project of this magnitude, it's going to take more than five years, which is usually what you have is protection for a site plan. So it's really like, it's a roadmap of a concept of how the project will be developed so that you're protected, in this case, for 20 years from zone changes, if you're going to develop it consistent with the GDP. The important thing to note, and you would not know this, because I don't know if any of you were here back then, maybe the chairperson was, was the GDP was done before this HCMU zone was even created, and the GDP does not have a density number for the residential units. It's just a roadmap of what it's going to look like, but it didn't, it doesn't, it's before the ordinance was even adopted. So that's one of the reasons why we're saying it's really not relevant, because we're reading this ordinance, which was adopted after the GDP, and it simply says four units of residential units per acre.
Well, Mr. Alfieri, I, I just, it's also true that in the law at, I'm sorry, the, here we go, 4055D dash 45.1, it says, "The general development plan shall set forth the permitted number of dwelling units, the amount of non-residential floor space, the residential density." So all of those things would have been, or certainly should have been, part of the GDP. And the reason for that is, again, to have this comprehensive plan that's set forward. So Mr. Alfieri is correct that there have been changes in the local ordinances during the life of this, these Adventure Crossing's applications. But... But, you know, the ordinances and the applications that were made, the obtaining of a general development permit, the removal of things from a general permit, I mean, they're, the approvals of this board and the GDP are not a buffet, from which only the most favored elements can be selected. The applicant did get a GDP, and in doing so, indicated to this board, this is our plan and this is what is included in this plan, both in terms of the uses and in terms of the land. And then a certain point, for reasons that don't necessarily concern us, and we don't necessarily need to know or need to know, Section 2 was removed from that GDP.
So isn't it kind of the same where if you remove Phase 2, and let's say Phase, if it's grandfathered in, and Phase 2 decide to do something else, they would, it's like using the entire acreage?
Right now, and, and, let me ask, with my understanding is, Phase 2, I mean, it is developed, but it could come in and make an application. It has a separate owner, it's removed from the GDP. I mean, it certainly would have to show in its application access, and it would show that access through Adventure Crossing. And as I said, that is a relevant factor, but not a dispositive factor, because there are other circumstances in which that can be the case, that there's only access through another's property. So, yes, that has been, and this goes, I mean, I don't mean to be facetious with this, you know, have your cake and eat it too, and facetious and cliched, but there is meat to that argument or to that position, which is that it is, again, saying, you know, it's, Phase 2 is part of this when we want it to be, but not when we don't want it to be. And though I will not go hard on, I think that Mr. Alfieri's position regarding 3 and 4 that was taken here, that was like, we, you can look at things discreetly when we want you to, but you can't look at things discreetly when we don't want you to. So, you know, I, from my perspective and my advice to the board is that Phase 2, which has been removed from the GDP, is not appropriately considered for the gross density, but I certainly, you know, Mr. Alfieri, if you'd like to be heard on that again...
Well, just one thing I neglected to mention, because you mentioned the GDP, and if we're focused solely on the GDP, without considering all the other elements that I talked about, then we're missing some of the more significant points. Again, the GDP was done under an old ordinance, did not have a four-unit-per-acre density discussion of any kind. The new ordinance that we're working under today has that for the first time. Number two is, the GDP did not have any warehouses. The new ordinance created a warehouse as a permitted use, and that's why the warehouse ultimately got developed as Phase 2. But if, but the focus saying, since Phase 2 was removed from the GDP, you should not include it, it's really, what was the intent of the ordinance when it said four units per acre? And that's really the question.
I think that the, what I would say is that from my argument, that what is critical is, what did the ordinance mean when it said four units per acre for the tract? What is the tract? That is the question. And you're saying that because the original application and all of the other things that you put forward, and I'm not, you know, regarding the utilities and all that, that it therefore is still one tract and that the removal from the GDP is not relevant to the identification of the tract? My position and my argument, but it's up to the board to decide, is that that removal and everything that has occurred regarding Phase 2 makes it, that that Phase 2 is no longer part of the tract for purposes of the density calculation.
Understood.
So when was the, when was Phase 2 removed from the application, and when did the new ordinance go into effect?
When you say that, when you say the new ordinance, we're not talking about the brand new ordinance. You're talking about the original...
Well, the original goes back to 2017 or something.
The Highway Commercial Mixed Use Zone was adopted February 11, 2020.
And the settlement of the litigation that resulted in the removal of the warehouse property, what is now the warehouse property, predated that. I'm trying to see if I have that exact date.
Well, the stipulation of settlement is dated October 9, 2019. I don't know if there were...
The year before, so 2019. I have it here, too.
So you guys know that I'm a bit of a nerd, and I have notes from all these, as you can see, all our meetings. And I don't, what's really interesting is, I don't know who asked the question, but the answer from Mr. Alfieri at that time, I think it was Mr. Hyman, but I'm not, I can't tell you for sure. His comment was, yes, it was removed from their project, but it was not removed from the tract. So he's, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm a little torn here, because he maintained even then, and this is back on March 5 of this year, when we were hearing testimony, that although the Track 2, although that Phase 2 was removed from the project, it was not removed from the tract of land because it was still interdependent on the roadways and the utilities and all of that. So I'm a little, I'm looking at your faces, and I'm, I'm as torn as you are, like, I'm not sure where to go with that. If you had a GDP because it was over a certain size and protection from zoning, where does that leave us? It's not owned by the same people, but it's dependent on those other things, so where does that leave us? I guess that's my confusion.
Right. So, and that goes really to that question of what is the tract? And Mr. Alfieri's position today is consistent with your notes, that he believes that Phase 2 is part of the tract because of this interdependence. And, you know, my view that the, the removal of that, you know, if it was 2019, Phase 2 was removed before the ordinance came into effect, then not only is it not part of the tract today, but it was not part of the tract then, at the time of the adoption of the ordinance. Now, you know, so, and Mr. Alfieri does, you know, talk about the utilities and there is interdependence. As I said, those are definitely relevant factors. I do not think that they are dispositive factors, but that's, that, I will stop repeating myself and let the, you know, the board...
I'm sorry, I'm going to put you, I'm going to ask you another question.
That's okay.
Do we consider that it's no longer owned, has the same ownership?
Right. So, under the development plan and the ordinance, the fact of subdividing and a change in ownership is, again, not dispositive. It doesn't necessarily remove it from the tract.
So I just had a question, I think it goes around the lines of the tract. So when we say Phase 2 was removed, right? So at that time, it was removed from what?
It was removed from the General Development Plan that had been applied for and granted by the board, that was supposed to rule, to set out the plan for the development of this overall site.
So it was removed?
Correct.
Right? We all agreed the GDP, Phase 2, is removed.
Yes.
Right? But now, we're saying it's not removed.
No, I think, no, what Mr. G, Mr. Alfieri is saying, Mr. GDP. Mr. Alfieri is saying is that it's irrelevant. It doesn't matter that it was removed, because that, in his argument, that what determines what the tract is, is the original application. That application for this overall site predated the HCMU ordinance. It predated the GDP. At some point in 2016, 2017, something like that, there was an application that was made that covered this whole site. Subsequent to that, there was an application covering the whole site, and I'm including all the phases in that, for a GDP for all of that.
Yes.
All right. So before that happened, Phase 2 was remo, I'm sorry, and then the, after that happened, the HCMU ordinance was adopted. So Phase 2 is removed from the site, and then the ordinance is adopted.
Removed from the GDP.
I'm sorry, from the...
So it's removed.
My mistake. Removed from the GDP. It didn't vanish, so, right. It was removed from the GDP. It is my position that that removal, that it was not part of the GDP at that time, it's not part now, that it is not part of the tract, that the tract is Phases 1, 3, 4, and 5. I never, we never talk about 5, but I guess it's still there. And that, those are the parcels in which it should be calculated, that that Phase 2 removed from the GDP should not be contemplated. Mr. Alfieri says, don't worry about the GDP. That doesn't matter. It is the original application back in 2016 or 17. I'm sorry, I don't have that date.
Still has it.
And the fact that Phase 2 still has access through the rest of Adventure Crossing, the Adventure Crossing site, and shares utilities with that site.
When Phase 3 and 4 were heard and passed, did you include that as part of a GDP in your calculations?
No.
I think you said, no.
No.
The Phases 3 and 4, that was passed last month, was that included in a full GDP, including Phase 2?
Was the property included, or was the, that residential design included? The property was included in GDP, but that, those condominium units were not part of the GDP.
So you figured your number's not on the GPD, but just on that, that area?
The numbers have nothing to do with the GDP, because we're looking at an ordinance that was adopted after the GDP, that established the four units per acre. That was after the GDP, completely after it.
Yeah, so, I think, and Mr. Alfieri will correct me if I'm wrong, in the, for the application that the board heard last month or decided last month, for Lots 3 and 4, the density calculation was done only on Lots of 3 and 4.
So if, so, I'm trying, I'm trying to phrase the question.
Because it's not, it's not in their favor, so now we have to...
Yeah, you have to talk it into life.
I'm just trying to understand. Because now that, since it's not in their favor, it was in their favor to not look at it before, and then now it's in their favor to look at it as a whole.
Correct. And what I am suggesting to the board, and that is, is a, definitely a position to be taken, that they asked for that, for 3 and 4, and that that's always should be done. My recommendation is simply that Phase 2 be removed, and the fact that Phase 3 and 4 were considered, at the applicant's request, as a closed, set application, not looking at the remainder of the sites, or remainder of the phases and the rest of the tract, which in my view does not include Track 2, is supportive of that, but not, you know, I'm not suggesting that is a position the board can take, and Mr. Alfieri seemed to think that we were taking it originally to look only at the application.
So if we were to, if we were to agree with what Ms. Zibrani is saying, then that would, that would mean that they would require a density variance in order for this to be considered for approval, correct?
It would be, it would, they would certainly still be entitled to some number of units. Obviously, they still would be looking at the acreage for 1, 3, 4, and 5. So there would definitely be a density calculation based on those, that acreage. So they would be entitled to a number of units. That number of units would be less than the number in the current application. So on the current application, to give that number of units, they would need a density variance, which is why Mr. Alfieri mentioned at the beginning of this time, that they may not have to, they might have to renotice, because that would be a D5 variance.
All right. So if we go back to what Christabel, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse for you, I apologize, but I just want to make sure we all understand. Christabel brought up the fact that when we discussed and approved last month, Phase 3 and 4, we only considered Phase 3 and 4. Correct?
Correct.
So if we're giving fair and equal treatment, then we're only considering Phase 1? Because you just said we couldn't, we could conceptually include 1, 3, 4, and 5, and that would still reduce the number of units. But if we, if we consider what Christabel said, and we only consider Phase 1, we would only consider that acreage.
Correct.
Okay. Does that make, okay?
Yeah, that makes sense. So to me, it kind of boils down to any guidance that we have as far as the definition of a tract. When we say we remove Phase 2, does that include removing it from the tract? Is there any guidance, or is it up to us to determine that?
It, so there is not a definition of that term tract within the ordinance. So, and that really is at the heart of the matter. So you can accept the interpretation that was given, that what governs the tract is the original application and all of the land that included back in 2016. And I'm saying 2016, it might have been 2017, but at that, it was the first time that there was an application for this board, before, for this project.
Not that it's going to be relevant, but just so the record's clear, in 2017, there was only 75 acres that was part of the application that was filed then. So I think we have to look at what was in existence when the ordinance was adopted in 2010, which was this entire Adventure Crossing project. Because the first application, this applicant didn't own the entire, what we called the tract. Subsequently, he bought the other parcels.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Alfieri. And so, then that is a question, so what is the tract? The, at the time of the adoption of the HCMU ordinance, there were applications, that was actually after the time that Phase 2 had already been removed from the GDP. The ordinance was adopted subsequently, it had been removed from the GDP, and been, then was the subject of an application for the warehouses, and that was where they had had the litigation and all of that. So there, it was, at the time of the passing of the ordinance, perhaps still in common ownership, but it had already been removed from the GDP.
Right. And so to me, it comes down to, at that moment where we said, okay, yep, let's remove it, it wasn't defined, remove it from where? So it, right, because one of the places it wasn't removed from was the tracks.
Well, I mean, the, I mean, when you...
Right?
In a, basically, you know, the tract is the land itself. So no, you couldn't say you were going to remove it from the land. It was removed from the GDP, it was then subsequently removed from common ownership, but it does still have common access and common utilities.
And so it was removed from the GDP, and in theory, removed from all calculations, density calculations, traffic, all the other calculations. Was it removed from everywhere?
No. No. But can I, can I make a suggestion, maybe, only because this is so complex and there's such a long history, and Mr. Borden just suggested it. If we agree that you don't act on this tonight, we'll notice for the density variance. You can have then Mr. Borden come up, present the testimony, give you, show you each plan, show you how it evolved, if that would help you. If it doesn't help you, then you want to decide tonight, that's okay, too. But I don't, if that's helpful, we're willing to do that. Notice for the density. If you rule we don't need it, there's no harm, and if we need it, we just keep going. If that's helpful, we'll be glad to do that.
Would that be helpful to the board?
Definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Alfieri.
Thank you, Mr. Borden.
Thank you, Mr. Borden.
So if we could pick a date, I will notice, worst case in our situation, which is the dense D5 variance and everything else, and we'll come back and we'll start with this point, we'll give you the whole, it's going to take time, unfortunately, but we get paid by the hour, so...
I only ask that Mr. Borden speak into the microphone.
Okay. So what's the next date that's available?
Hi, Mr. Alfieri. How are you today?
Good, how are you?
September 3rd is the first we can get on. We currently have no application scheduled, so we can give you spot number one.
That's perfect.
September 3rd.
September 3rd, 2025.
Thank you. I think that would be very helpful.
Good, thank you. So we'll, you don't have to now say anything, we will, we will renotice for September 30.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Enjoy the summer, if I'm not back in August. Enjoy the summer.
And, and I, and since you said you wanted to do it at the end, I assume you still waive statutory defaults?
Yes, we waive everything through, at least to September 3 meeting, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody need a break before we go out? All right, we're going to take a 10-minute break. We'll return at, I think it says eight, it'll be 8:35. Thank you. I'll have the meeting back to order. Before we move on to the applicant, if you could just give me two more minutes, please. I was remiss in my duties. I need, we also need a motion and a second to reappoint our recording secretary, Kathleen Bibsa, and our acting recording secretary, Gina Tumalo. So I need a motion and a second. And just to be clear, I know that Ms. Zibrani talked about the changing dynamics in the state about the newspapers, but we never really put them up, the names on the record. So it's the Asbury Park Press and Star Ledger. So I just wanted to make sure we got that. I'm sorry?
Are they not considered professionals?
Well, Gina, not in this capacity, because she's the acting recording secretary, so it's not considered a professional. So we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second.
Mr. Martins?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Dr. Hofstein?
Yes.
Ms. Rosal?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, gladly move on to application number four. High Lifeline NJ Inc., signs variance 3535, location 90 North County Line Road.
Good evening. Michael Roberts, on behalf of High Lifeline, presenting Mr. Borden in regard to the application for the variance.
Mr. Borden?
I'm going to use the microphone.
Do you swear a firm that the testimony you'll give before this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name and credentials briefly.
Certainly. Ian Borden, President of Professional Design Services, Lakewood, New Jersey, Licensed Professional Planner, testified. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so we're here tonight to talk about a sign var, a couple of sign variances for High Lifeline. Okay, so we're here tonight to talk about a sign varian, a couple of sign variances for High Lifeline. High Lifeline is building, is in the process of completing a facility located on North County Line Road. It is located between, in front of the Jackson Green Apartments, next to Bartley Healthcare. So it's on the north side of County Line Road. The site is about five acres. I had actually done the site plan in 2005 with the planning board. It was approved and remained undeveloped for many years. And High Lifeline bought it, I'm guessing, two or three years ago and has been developing it. So the building is substantially completed and the site work has been partially completed. And they are looking to complete the identification sign for the project. The, now first as an introduction to the board members that may not know, High Lifeline is a nonprofit organization that supports families primarily of sick children, cancer children. They perform a variety of medical and educational purposes and family support purposes. Gotten to know them and it's absolutely, I'm sure my attorney here is much more familiar with it than I am, but knowing the people that are, that are running the organization, is run out of New York and this is, this is going to be their main facility in Ocean County, which is pretty, pretty cool. The building is around, I don't have the exact number here, but it's a single building. It was approved frankly as a shopping center back in 2005 and it's about 25,000 square feet. Actually, it's 34,000 square feet. And they're occupying the entire building for this charitable purpose. The approved site plan contains a sign located in the, if you look at the variance plan that was submitted, we noted where the approved sign was located. It's located in the corner, the front right corner or the southeastern corner of the property. And that was a freestanding sign, pretty typical for shopping centers along County Line Road. It's permitted by the ordinance primarily. It's 16, 16 feet high with an area of 75 feet and a setback of 30 feet. Actually, an area of 100 square feet. The maximum sign area under the ordinance at that time and continuing today was 75 square feet. So we obtained a variance in 2005 for 100 square foot sign where 75 square foot is permitted. High Lifeline is proposing a very distinctive sign, frankly, in my opinion, a very attractive sign that serves three purposes and that's kind of the foundation of why we are requesting the variances. The, they're proposing a ground sign of a height of 16 feet. The area is substantially larger, 247 square feet and, and we have a zero setback. We're proposing it right on the front property line. The reason for the zero setback, and I'll provide some planning testimony in a few minutes, is we're moving the sign from the southeastern corner to the center of the property. They believe centrally locating it in the, in between the driveways is a good location. And we are limited by the location of the existing driveway that's being constructed. The sign has basically three components. The, the top portion of the sign, which is 57, 57 square feet, contains the, and there's a color on the, on the variance map that was submitted, contains the High Lifeline name. Below that is 76 square feet, which is reserved for donor names. They have some samples on there. So they want to recognize those individuals or corporations that donate substantial, I guess, I'm assuming, funds to the charitable organization. And then the, the 144 square feet on the bottom is proposed to be a single animated sign to advertise the facility and events. And that's again illustrated on the variance plan. So what we, what we are required to obtain for this, for this sign is, is the following variances and obviously the board professional letters properly called these out and I agree with all of their recitations. First is that because this sign is mounted on the ground, it's, it's considered by the definition of the ordinance, a ground sign. A ground sign has a maximum height of 16, of six feet, I'm sorry, six feet. We are proposing a sign of 16 feet. So it's the same height as the approved sign, but because the sign extends all the way to the ground and doesn't have space below the sign, it's not a freestanding sign as the approved sign is, but it's a ground sign. So in my opinion, that's a technical variance. The actual height of the sign is no different than what's approved, but under the definition of the ordinance, that requires a variance. Second is the sign area under B6G. These are all under the signed ordinance, 244-207. The maximum area of a ground sign, again, technical ground sign, is 30 square feet. A freestanding sign, as I mentioned, is permitted to have 75 square feet, but we are considered a ground sign because we're, as I said, located on the ground. So we are requesting a variance where 247 square feet are proposed where 30 square feet is, is permitted. I believe the comparison, in my opinion, should practically should be 247 versus the 100 square feet that's approved, but technically the variance is 30 square feet permitted, 247 proposed. The setback is required to be 30 feet for a sign of that area. We are proposing again zero square feet. And there's two final variances that all are the same component. One is section A20, one is section D1 under the sign ordinance, 244-207, and both of them prohibit animated signs. So animated signs, I'm sure the board has heard in the past, are not permitted anywhere in the township of Jackson. So we've done them rarely. Venture Crossing, funny enough, was one example where one was approved. But we are proposing again the animated portion, which represents 46% of the sign area. And should also be noted that the sign is located within a, there's a six-foot shade tree utility easement that exists along the, behind the front line of the property and the sign overlaps on top of that, on top of that easement. And lastly, we do have two waivers and then I'll circle back and do the planning testimony and some more technical testimony. But lastly, we have two waivers required also under the sign ordinance. One is for the number of colors. The sign ordinance doesn't allow more than four colors for any one sign. And obviously as an animated sign, there's many different colors, so that's a waiver. These are design waivers as identified by the planner's review. And lastly is under B6C, the, under the ground sign, you're required to have landscaping at the base of the sign. And we are proposing to have the sign extend to the ground. So obviously we can't do landscaping at the base of the sign because it would obscure, obscure the sign. Focusing first on the shade tree and utility easement, that was assigned during the site plan. There are no utilities located in that easement. All of the water and sewer and gas are located out in County Line Road in front of the property. That was really a technical matter that was required by the planning board at that time. So there are no utilities within that easement. That's not to say one might be extended there in the future. I cannot contemplate where, how that would occur, but having a sign over the easement would not preclude that from occurring either. In my opinion, the sign and the easement can, can coexist. And similarly on the shade tree, the shade tree aspect of the easement, there are shade trees proposed to be planted along the frontage. We will continue to plant those and they're not affected by this, by this sign. As far as the variance is concerned, the property is 550 feet of lot, of frontage along County Line Road. So it is a, what I would consider to be a wide property. We did place the sign in the middle of the site. Normally when you're dealing with animated signs, one of the concerns you have in one of the, in other ordinances, not particularly in Jackson, but a design consideration is you don't want an animated sign located too close to a traffic signal. You don't want to have the colors of the animated sign confused or conflated with the, with the traffic signal. In our case, we have no traffic signal located in close proximity. You have Bartley Road, which is easily 600, 700 feet north of the property, which has a signal. But again, that's why we put the sign in the middle of the property. So to avoid any confusion or conflicts with any other adjoining signs or anything like that. And in my opinion, the, the sign would qualify as a C2 benefits versus detriments variance. I do believe that there's no negative impacts from this sign, particularly because we're dealing with a charitable organization that is building an absolutely beautiful facility. It's a very large facility. I think be, befitting a larger sign. And certainly in my opinion, will have no negative impact on the, on the zone plan or master plan. Lastly, the, the board planner did ask for testimony regarding the performance standards found in 244-160 ordinance. These are the general performance standards that we include in most testimony, but, but certainly include those at their request. And that is, does the proposed variance adversely impact noise, air pollution, solid waste, radiation, fire hazard, or lighting? Basically general environmental impacts. And in my opinion, certainly the sign does not, it does not generate any noise, does not generate any air pollution or solid waste, radiation, fire hazard. As far as lighting concerns, the lighting aspect of that performance standard in the ordinance focuses on spotlights and floodlights. None of those are proposed here. The light, this, this sign will be internally illuminated and obviously animated. So there's no spotlights on the sign. That's, that's where the ordinance lighting standard applies. So in my opinion, we, we, we don't have any negative impacts on those performance standards. So in my opinion, the variance can be granted without detriment to the zone plan or master plan.
I'm sorry, Mr. Borden, I just want to get something clear regarding the easements. You referred to them being done during the planning application. Who holds the easements?
I believe it's dedicated to Jackson Township. I'm not positive on that though. I'm reading my variance plan. It says six-foot wide shade tree utility easement. Doesn't say to whom it's dedicated, but normally they are. I should have added that normally a shade tree utility easement, it's unusual in my opinion for them to be assigned to a commercial property like this. Normally a shade tree utility easements are associated with residential developments. All subdivisions that we do and have done for 30, 40 years have these types of easements because when you're dealing with a residential roadway, a 50-foot right-of-way typically, the purpose for the utility easement is for, not for water and gas or sewer, well, it might be for gas, but it's for electric and cable. That's really what the, because they, they're, in, in the case of subdivisions, the electric and cable are constructed outside of the right-of-way, behind, on the front edge of the, of the residential properties. So in some cases, and possibly even this board, I don't have that good of a memory, we're asked to provide those as a checklist item for commercial properties and we always do. My point is that it doesn't serve any purpose because all the utilities in this case are out in the roadway. And
But as long as the easement stands, it could be exercised.
We're not proposing to vacate the easement or change the easement. And honestly, I don't believe there's any prohibition in the, in the easement that would, that would restrict us from putting the sign on top of it. Certainly wouldn't propose a building that's on, you know, on top, but the sign is not a, in my opinion, not a contradictory use.
Yes, just a few follow-up questions and comments. First, you already touched on the proposed sign. And just to confirm, is that going to be replacing the already approved freestanding sign?
Thank you, Mark. I should have said that. Yes, we're, we're not proposing both signs. We're replacing the approved sign with this proposed sign. So that sign will be, will not be constructed.
Okay. And regarding the shade tree and utility easement, you mentioned that right now there's currently no utilities within that easement. That's your understanding, correct?
Yes.
And should there need to be any utilities in the future, it's your opinion that they could still put utilities in underneath the sign?
Yes.
You've described what the sign will have on it, such as the business name, dedication plaques, and then the digital screen. You said the digital screen will display images and wording relating to the business itself?
Yes, it will not be offsite advertising. It would only display events for High Lifeline.
When it comes to animated signs, there's concerns with safety. For example, how often, we don't want it to be distracting the drivers. Can you speak about how often the screen will flash or blink or move? Or would you be willing to provide testimony that you will comply with typical animation guidelines for safety?
I have not had that conversation, but I absolutely agree. We would comply with normal industry accepted guidelines. That's a very good point. It's not the intent to change the copy so quickly that it becomes destructive. And nor typically, while Jackson doesn't have standards, there's, as Mr. O'Meyer indicates, there's other standards that apply. We would certainly comply with those.
Okay. Regarding any site obstruction, it's my opinion that the sign is out of any site triangle from the driveway entrance and exits. Are you in agreement with that, Mr. Borden?
Yes, it's not in any site. Again, that's why we placed it centrally in the site to keep it out of any sight lines of the driveways.
In the township ordinance section 244-207 describes all the specific requirements for signs. I believe Mr. Borden touched on the ones that they're seeking design waivers from. For example, you know, the setback, can you just explain why you need the zero-foot setback?
Yes. Normally we wouldn't request that, but in the case of this design, again, the design dating back to 2005, the front driveway parallel to County Line Road is located 20 feet from the right-of-way line. So we have a curb line that runs parallel to the right-of-way, 25 feet offset. So we're basically, the sign is 20 feet wide, so it occupies the space between the curb and the, and the right-of-way.
There's no sidewalk proposed or existing along the frontage. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Borden, you had indicated in your testimony that the original approval for a freestanding sign received a variance for 100 square feet or 75 feet, is that correct?
Yes.
And how long ago was that?
That was 2005.
So for 20 years, this property has had that approval, correct?
Yes.
To the best of your knowledge, has the, have the sign ordinances in town changed since then?
No, not to my knowledge.
Is there any reason that the sign can't be smaller than 20 feet wide so as not to have a zero-foot setback?
I, I would say no. I would say no.
Is there any reason that the 75-square-foot donor space couldn't be put on the front of the building as opposed to the sign?
That's a question for my client who's not here. The answer is I don't know the answer to that. I know it was very important for them to have them on the sign.
And you had akin the size of the sign to the size of the adventure crossing sign.
I just mentioned there was another animated sign.
Are you familiar with any other 247-square-foot signs in this area along County Line Road for projects that are five acres in size or for the building sizes that are 34,000 square feet?
I don't know the exact area, but across the street from us is an existing professional plaza that has a sign that I would guess is, is between 150 and 200 square feet. It's not animated, but it's, it's, I can't remember the name of the complex. My son had guitar lessons in there. But they have the name of the facility and in that case, it's more of a typical sign where they have all the placards of all the business names. But that, that's significantly larger than the, than the sign ordinance permits.
So I guess my concern is that it's nice to want a sign this big and it's nice to provide some testimony, but I'm not sure that, given the site constraints, that there isn't either a better location. Is there the ability to revise the Is there the ability to revise the parking layout inside the project so you could have the sign further back? Or so that it could become a freestanding sign, or so it could greater conform to the variance that was granted? It just seems that, we said we wanted a sixteen-by-twenty sign, and we want it out front, and we want it to be animated, and we want it to have all of this information on it. But I'm not sure that it doesn't have a negative impact on the zone plan or the zone ordinance because we specifically restrict animated signs. And it doesn't appear that there's an advertisement for the use of the building in the donor spaces. And so while the sign is a handsome sign, it just, it requires significant relief from the municipal ordinances, and I'm not sure that, to the board members, that there's been sufficient testimony to sustain the variance relief. Thank you.
As far as moving the sign back farther, normally, in, in these cases, in normal shopping center or a commercial design would have, the front curb line of a property project would have parking spaces. In other words, you have cars that park head-on facing the roadway. And normally, we would just take one or two parking spaces away and move the sign back into an island that we create in the parking spaces. In this case, however, if you look at the variance plan, it is a driveway that runs along parallel to the road. So to, to the question that can we just make some modifications to the, to the parking area, the answer is no, because, you know, well, you can always make modifications, but they would be very-
You could flip the entire design, you could have the aisle that faces County Line Road up against the building.
Correct. And, and that would take away at least twenty spaces that, that front the building, remembering this is a charitable use for sick children. I think it's important to have those spaces close to the, to the building.
And it's, it's an approval that's been here for twenty years.
Yes.
So could, could this, could the sign be relocated further west or to the left on the drawing to the space where the westerly entrance drive is, outside of the site?
Well, what, what could happen is, we, we have islands looking right behind the sign. There's, there's two islands there. Could the sign be placed in one of those islands? Yes. And then we'd have to raise the sign, the bottom of the sign, so that you could see it over the cars. Right, right now, we're proposing a ground sign. So we would, it could become more of a freestanding sign in that island, have the bottom of the sign, right now, the bottom of the sign, I have the map here. The approved sign has a clearance to the bottom of the sign of five foot six inches. So we could maintain that same clearance, say, so you could see it at the bottom of the sign over top of the cars. I mean, that, I think, without, I would need to discuss that with my client, but from a planning and engineering perspective, that, that could, that could happen. That would, that would provide us with a thirty-foot setback, which is required by the ordinance. That would eliminate that variance. It would-
Just answer my question.
It, it, it would make the height-
Mr. Borden, are you providing engineering testimony?
No.
Okay, just wanted to be clear.
So, I mean, that, that would be an alternative, to relocate the sign to the island and raise it.
But it would still remain the same size?
I would propose it to be the same size.
Why do you need the animation?
I'd have to defer to my, my client who's, who's not here.
If you, if you eliminated the animation, if you had the donor plaques moved to the building-
I could have spoken this year. We have to introduce our witness.
If you had the donor plaques moved to the building where more people who are interested in what's happening there will see the names of the people who provided the, the structure, they would get more recognition with that. And, and you could have a smaller sign and set it back further and would be more in line with the ordinances that we have.
I'd have Mr. Aaron Tropper sworn in as a representative for High Lifeline. Not as an attorney, just as a-
Hi, good evening.
Hi, I'm sorry. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give before this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Hi. Sure, my name is Aaron Tropper, and I am a law clerk at Rosenberg Law Group. We represent High Lifeline as general counsel. And just to Dr. Hofstein's question, in regards to the animation of the sign, High Lifeline has many different events throughout the year. And the purpose of the animation is to let the people know. For example, we have a toy drive that takes place about four or, or five times a year. We have different events that we'll be holding in the building to benefit these children. And it is our goal, again, not to have a sign which is going to be changing as, as, as was brought up, but we do want the people to understand and to know what we're trying to do and who we're trying to benefit, which is these sick children.
I'm sorry, I have just a couple of questions. I wasn't sure, just for the record, I didn't, I didn't get your last name?
Sure, Aaron Tropper, T-R-O-P-P-E-R.
And I'm sorry, you're a, a law clerk, or?
Yeah, correct, at Rosenberg Law Group.
All right, just, yeah, that was, that part was just for the record.
Sure.
But, so, I, I think in terms of the moving sign, and I think you had, had honed on, on a question that had the board and the professionals had asked. So how often would you anticipate that the message would change? And would, would it also be flashing, or is it just sort of that you would have the ability to change the message?
So it is my understanding that it would change as per the event. So for example, let's say if we're running an event, you know, so maybe one, one week prior or two weeks prior, we would put up what the event would be, but it would not be changing such as a sign like that would be flashing different events or maybe different pictures. Instead, is my understanding that it would be to publicize that event, and then once that would pass, perhaps we would change it to the upcoming event that would be further down the road.
Mr. Tropper, please correct me if I'm wrong. When I first reviewed this application for the LED sign, how, my interpretation of it was more so kind of like those new menu boards you see nowadays. So the advertisement itself would be stationary, it would just be changeable. Is that, is that more accurate to say? So your advertisements, there's not going to be any blinking, flashing, anything like that. It's just going to be more so so it can be on a rotation-
Correct.
And easily changeable. The advertisement itself is not going to be animated or moving in any way.
Correct.
Is that fair enough to say? Is that offer any clarity? That, that's how I initially reviewed it anyway.
Could that, could that be a condition of approval? Meaning, I, I personally have issue with animated signs. I hate to say it, but in front of this building, I find it very distracting every time I drive down the road here. I'm in front of Adventure Crossing, it's the ones that I know of, that are actually animated and they're flashing and a lot going on. I find it personally distracting. So like Mr. Borden said, it doesn't distract, you know, as far as traffic lights go, but in general, I find that to be an issue. So I personally have no issue with the change from time to time if you want to change it for an event. But I would love that could be a condition of approval.
Yeah, please, please allow me to clarify, I think my terminology was probably a bit skewed, creating that confusion. The, the ordinance describes signs as not being animated or changeable copy. We're not proposing, I think, we're not proposing an animated sign.
Right, right.
It's not Disney World.
We've all seen those signs with the chasing-
We're not, that's correct.
The words are moving.
We're proposing changeable copy sign. And a changeable copy, as Mr. Tropper testified, that would change on more of a daily basis, not a, not even more than once per day.
Just two quick more points for discussion, my apologies. It's obviously illuminated, pretty much the whole thing. How bright are those lights going to be, that close to the road? And the, it doesn't specify on here, I mean, we can measure to scale, Ian, but like, where the sign location is, how far away from the entrance and exits of that parking lot is there? Just because, I mean, County Line, you're driving pretty fast on it, and if you're coming down, and everyone likes to speed, someone's pulling out or pulling in?
Before, before Mr. Borden answers, are we discussing where they were proposing? Or in the, help me, of the island, like, like you discussed?
Well, in the, in the proposed location as submitted to the board, again, it's, the, the driveways, there's two driveways into the property. Being we're on County Line Road, which is divided roadway, we have right-in and right-out only. So we have two driveways that are right-in and right-out, it's between the two. It's closer to the northern one, it's approximately a hundred and fifty feet south of the northernmost drive. Again, as with Mr. Romeyer's questions, outside of the site triangle easement. If it were to be moved to the island, it would be another, it would be more centrally located, an additional forty feet south of that drive, so about two hundred feet south of the drive. It's not in close proximity to either drive.
And the other part of my question, Ian, again, I don't know much about that type of, of LED changeable copy sign, but how bright are those? Because just my own personal experience, some of those really take your, your eyes some time to adjust as you go past. Is there any type of restriction that maybe we can put on it? Lumens, maybe, I'm not really sure.
I can speak to that. So I, I mentioned previously, there's typical animated sign or illuminated sign standards. So just to hit on a couple, which I'd be happy to go over in more detail. But, so there's a duration of how long an image should be displayed. For example, a minimum of ten minutes before you change an image. Limitation on the number of characters, just so it's not too much for drivers to read. Luminance, which says a maximum brightness of five thousand nits is the unit of measure, which is candela's per square meter. Dimmers at night, no audio, no political or obscene language.
I'm sorry, Mr. Romeyer, where are these conditions from? Because there was a reference to guidelines before, but I think if we're going to have a condition regarding that, it would be helpful to be able to identify the standard.
So there, there's none in the town, in the Jackson Township Code? These are from the industry standard for other municipalities?
I don't like the sign in the proposed location. I would prefer it would be in one of the islands. I think that's too close to County Line Road, and I completely agree with Mr. Hyman. Using the example outside of this sign outside of this building, that is, I mean, in the change and the lights, you know, as long as they stay into the standards of, you know, it's not, it's not flashing, it's not changing rapidly, I have no problem with it. But I don't like it that close to County Line Road, even though it's a divided road. We all know the type of traffic that's going, you know, to and from there. So I would prefer that the sign be on the island. And I have to be honest with you, I, I love Mr. Peters' idea of the donors being on the building. I mean, as someone goes by, are you really getting a good look? Think about this for a second. You're driving by, we're complaining about the flashing lights on here, are you really getting a good look at what those donors' names are? I'm not.
So, so a couple of points, you know, to your, what you're saying. I do think it's a good idea technically to put onto the building, though if, you would look at a different application of such a size, they would have, like Mr. Borden said before, they would have multiple tenants throughout, and they would have those little placards on that big sign. So I don't see this technically being different, but I don't see the purpose necessarily of having it displayed there. My other question really is also, the same intent of the sign, is why do we need this animated sign? Who is it for? Is it for the people of the building, letting them know? My understanding is, if you're part of an organization, then you would have some kind of communication from within, notifying you of such events. What would be the purpose of displaying it to the public? I'm just trying to get a better understanding of the intent for it and the need of that. You don't want to call it the animation, more of that illuminated sign.
I took it as to the public, I'll let Mr. Borden speak to that. I agree with you that other signs have names of businesses, but this seems larger. I think Mr. Peters made a great point, this just seems much larger. Am I, think about some of the other signs we see in town, this just seems much larger.
It's also because it's on the ground.
Right.
If it was vertical and it would be in the air, it would be a little bit different. But another thing is that I, to me, that I'm seeing missing from this would be, the most important thing for me, would be the address of the site.
The address is required to be on there, so that will be on there.
I just don't see a part of it.
Oh, because it's not on the picture.
You may not see it, I don't see it either. But that is a requirement of a sign in Jackson, is to have the address.
And then, would it impede any future development of sidewalks?
No. In the location, it is current, proposed currently, yes, it would.
So I think that would be an issue.
Yes.
I don't think we should compromise on-
So are you, is, is, can you agree to that, or do you need to confer with your client regarding moving the sign from the proposed location to the median? Or island?
Yeah, we could, we can agree to that. So we'll relocate the sign to the, to the island. We will move the donor placards, remove them from the sign. We will not increase the height of the sign, the sign will remain sixteen feet high, but the bottom of the sign will be raised, so the sign area will reduce because we'll-
So to be more of a freestanding sign and not a ground sign?
Yes, yes. I think the changeable copy is important because they're advertising different events. It's not normally a sign for a shopping center just advertising the businesses. In this case, they're, they're advertising events, so there is a need, I certainly see, to change the copy electronically. But I think to applying, complying with the standards that, that Mr. Romeyer read out loud is certainly not, not an issue.
I would just like to respond, but I was, you know, Gina could-
Go ahead, Gina, then we'll go back to Mr. Hyman.
Thank you. The changeable copy signs that we're seeing is, is becoming more and more popular. It's becoming more part of the industry standards, and I get that. It's a lot more convenient for you to change. Also, to please keep in mind, any events that they're putting out there, any other, even temporary signs, that's all requires permitting too. We have restrictions on how many you can put out, for how long, et cetera, et cetera. Just something else to keep in mind. But I wanted to touch base on what Mr. Borden said about the donor plaques being moved to the building. Typically, well, first off, are they, Mr. Tropper, are they going to change at any time? Or they pretty much, once you put them up, your donors are pretty much always going to stay the same?
So I believe these, these donors wouldn't change, I believe?
Just from a zoning perspective, if they were to change, I mean, every time you change them, we normally require a new sign permit. Like, before we decided, before the applicant decided to change the sign, the, excuse me, the dedication plaques to the wall sign, a normal monument sign in a shopping plaza, every time a tenant changes that small little tidbit, whether it be just a word or it be their, their full business, that all requires a sign permit. So I just wanted to put that on the record. And the last point I wanted to make is a timer. Is it going to be a ti, is the illumination of the sign going to be on a timer, is it going to be off at night?
It's dim, dimmed at night.
Just dimmed?
Yes.
Okay. That's all my questions, thank you.
So just to, but thank you. So just to readdress, the advertising of this animated or illuminated sign?
Changeable copy, yeah.
However you want to-
I'm, I'm saying that more for my benefit than yours, because I want to make sure I don't conflate it anymore.
So you're saying that it's advertising certain events. I sort of mentioned before, the events generally are not, my understanding of such an organization is, that it's not being advertised in general to the public, for the public, it's for the, for the organization.
Well, it's, it's for the public on behalf of the organization.
So-
As the example given for the toy drive, you know, now it's seen that a particular date is, or dates is the, is the, you know, biannual or toy drive, for example.
Okay.
It is for the public.
Are the events, events due to- Are the events, events to get donations for the...
Yes. That would be the example of the toy drive.
You're going to have fundraisers there?
Yes. Asking for the donations of toys for the toy drive.
So in that case, you really don't have to have the sign changed more than once or maybe twice a day, and just keep that as...
That's correct.
Okay, so I think that should be in the resolution. And then with the...
I'm sorry, could you say that it'll be changed only once or twice a day?
Yes, if they're fine with it, that...
That's fine.
So changed no more than twice a day?
Yes.
Less distraction on that road than we have people going 50 miles an hour.
Understood.
With the, I didn't get here what Gina said, the, if the plaques are outside the building, then they need to get approval?
So our current sign ordinance allows one wall sign at, I believe it's 80 square feet, or 15% of the total square footage of the facade area, whichever is smaller. So if you want to keep individual plaques, I don't know how we're going to work that if it's going to be eight different signs, because then we're going to need a variance for the amount of wall signs. If we can somehow, God bless you, combine them into maybe one donor plaque that fits that square footage maximum of 80 square feet, bless you, then we could try to make that work. I don't know how you want to address that. That's why I had asked if those donors are going to change, because if we choose to, yeah, if those plaques are going to change, because in a normal monument sign, every time a business changes that sign on their monument sign, that requires a new sign permit.
We're not, we're not asking for a variance from the wall sign. Let's make the record clear.
Right, but I'm just saying, if you have eight separate plaques, and that's eight separate wall signs.
In the lobby, and you may be adding, as you get more donors, you'll be adding to the signs.
Well, if I donate, I want my name, if I donate, I want my name bright up there.
I agree, but I just want it on the record that that is what our current sign ordinance allows.
Like a tree of life or whatever.
But I would envision a particular part of a wall facade sign, its placard, one that would contain the individual placards of the donors.
Well, think about a hospital.
Exactly.
You have some that are, as you walk up to the hospital, that's what I'm envisioning. So I would think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Tropper, the sign will be stationary, but they will add, so let's just say Ian is the first donor, Miss Ciprian is the second donor, you're going to have those names, and then whoever else adds is going to be added to it, correct?
They have a lot of names on there, and it's what we want, where your max out sign lines, that's all that we're...
Okay.
We'll comply with the facade signage area requirements.
The question is, how does that work? Meaning, what do they have currently on their building, and what are they going to be proposing for their building now? Would that need any kind of...
They'll meet the guideline, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Borden, he said they'll meet the...
So that was the question. Is there a sign on the building currently?
Yes, but it's substantially smaller than what the maximum sign area is permitted to be.
So combination, but there's only one. Now that you're going to do an additional, how does that work?
We'll do an additional one with these placards as one sign, if you were, with the individual placards on it.
That would be a variance.
That will not be a variance.
Permit, a permit.
We will comply with the percentage of...
That's not what Gina was saying. She's saying is, you're only allowed one wall sign.
No, Mr. Hy, sorry, go ahead. Yeah, there's one wall sign permitted, so you're saying there's already a wall sign existing on the building that says Chi Lifeline. Now you're requesting a second wall sign that is breaking down your donors.
That, I think I disagree. In my opinion, again, going back to your, this was approved as a shopping center. This always envisioned wall signage of individual tenants. There were eight or 10 different retail restaurant tenants in the approval. My understanding is that it's not the number of signs, it's the area of the total area of the facade signs as compared to the facade area. It can't exceed 15%.
Was the use changed?
I'm sorry?
Was the use changed?
Was the use changed?
Was the use changed? From a shopping plaza?
Uh, would you say yes?
It was. So you can't go by shopping plaza regulations, and also the sign ordinance specifically says it's one sign permitted per tenant. So even if we wanted to go by that, it's only one tenant. And I'm not trying to dig at you, Ian, I just want everything on the board, so when you come into an application, I don't have to deny it, we have to come back again. I just like to be transparent and have everything on the floor at once.
Through the chair.
Yes.
We hear some testimony or some guidance from our...
Basically from that testimony, then I want to keep it on the freestanding. You're making it now, you, we proposed a solution to do it on the facade, and now there's hurdles being thrown at the facade, so let's just leave it on the sign as we proposed it.
Why don't we ask the applicant to revise submission?
That's fine. Why don't we come back?
We just keep talking about things, we're not in a specialty brand new mall, we have to be acting.
I'm here.
We're sort of redesigning while we sit here.
I agree. I thought, I thought a charitable organization would be a little more helpful.
Mr. Borden, it's not about it being a charitable organization. Not one comment is about that.
I understand, but...
Mr. O'Meara, did you want to say something before we, before Gina looks at the date?
No, I think we should just cover it all.
Gotcha. Thank you.
If you could please schedule us, can we come back in August?
Freddie Jean?
Oh, I'm sorry?
He asked for August, so I didn't know if he wanted to go over that.
Yeah, I heard that. I'm sorry, I thought you were taking it as a day.
That's okay. August 6th.
I know what those, what the days look like.
August 6th, we have three applications already. I mean, as long as they're well-prepared, I would imagine, I would imagine that we could come to a conclusion of this application, as long as we're well-prepared and everything is, that we had, we had brought to light has been addressed.
I'm sorry, so were you saying that there is a date in August?
August 6th.
Under the, under the...
August 6th, we have three applications scheduled already, but I can't imagine that in all reality that this would take very long.
Do you think that by August...
Pending that all of our comments were addressed.
Do you think, Mr. Borden, reasonably, that by, before August 6th, a fair amount before August 6th, you'd be able to make a revised submission in time for...
That was my other question. I didn't know if you would require them to re-notice, Jean.
We will make the submission by August 26th, yes.
August 26th?
August 6th.
Oh, August 6th.
No, no, I'm sorry, July 26th.
Oh, okay.
We'll make this submitted by July 26th.
Submitted by, and will...
Are professionals, is that enough time to do a review?
Give you time to review?
Yeah.
Mr. Peters, Mr. O'Meara? Mr. O'Meara says yes, Mr. Peters has not weighed in.
Excuse me one second, I'm sorry, Mr. Hyman.
I'm just questioning, what are they going to be submitting for? Meaning, just so we, there may be more testimony than we're expecting. Are they going to have the donors' names on that?
We're hoping that they can come to some kind of resolution and make up their mind and bring a fully revised application to us.
They remain the master of their application in light of the input from the board, and I don't know, there's a member of the public, so I don't know if there was any desire for questioning.
So is it going to be August 6th, and you'll get the submission? Okay, just say, I just want to, the, the, yeah, no, but he...
Yes.
He indicated, unless I misread that head motion, that he's not needing a question.
I've heard the board and the zoning officer will take those comments to my client, will present a revised plan by July 26th, 10 days prior to the August 6th hearing.
August 6th, are we requiring notice? No?
Well, no, no additional notice will be required.
No notice required, okay. We'll carry it to August 6th. Thank you.
So it'll be on August 6th.
And just to do things appropriately, I will open this to the public. I know the gentleman has already stated he doesn't need to come forward, but we will open this to the public. Seeing nobody come forward, we're going to go ahead and close public session. You'll come back on August 6th?
We will. Thank you.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
See on August 6th?